Good morning and welcome to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM Tuesday, March 7th, 2012. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
Motion, Madam Chair.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Before we move into the agenda this morning, we wanted to stop for just a moment and wish Commissioner Stamey's wife, Rhonda, a happy birthday. I understand that she turned 50 today.
Oh, look, I said it. I didn't say the number.
You said, oh, yes, you did.
No, 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 no.
And the pressing question is, Mr. Stamey, how in the world did you manage to marry such a much younger woman than yourself?
He married up.
He married up.
Mr. Holder, I hope you got, I hope you're gonna come through later today, too, right?
Well, I'll come through for your wife, absolutely. No doubt. She will be rewarded for this birthday.
I can't go on now after this, after this thing here, so.
Did you want to say something, Mr. Stamey?
I just want to wish her a happy birthday. I'll see her later today.
Very good.
Thank you for that, appreciate that.
All right. Moving on, under administration, we have a resolution requesting authorization to submit the fiscal year 2013 application for the Federal Transit Administration 5310 Transportation Grant. Our presenter is David Williamson, Transit Director, thus exhibit number two. Good morning.
Good morning. We do request permission to submit the annual Federal Transit Administration Section 5310 grant application. This is part of the funds that are used to finance the Department of Human Services Transportation Services here in Henry County, and it's part that we've been a part of for the past 13 years.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution pertaining to the Federal Transit Administration's grant, and I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Move.
Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Moving on to Sploesd Capital Projects, we have a resolution requesting approval of a deed of conveyance for the new fire station number nine in Stockbridge. Our presenter is Rod Burkhalter, Capital Projects Director, exhibit number three. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners. It's necessary to approve a deed of conveyance for the commercial fire line meter for the contribution of fixed assets, limited warranty, and owner's affidavit between Henry County and the City of Stockbridge for the new fire station number nine in Stockbridge. The amount of the fixed assets for the compact fire meter, water line materials, and the sewer materials paid by Henry County being conveyed to the City of Stockbridge is $46,627. Anyone has any questions?
I know we, we comment on this typically when we convey assets to the Water and Sewerage Authority, but Mike, this question, I guess, is for you. When we're talking about conveying these assets to a city, do we also keep up with the amount or the cost of these fixed assets in case that we may need to do some exchange of services in the future as it relates to the value?
We have not in the past, no. But we can, we'll start with this, this particular one. What'll happen is we'll actually, this asset that we're basically conveying to them will go on their asset listing, and ours, when we finish the fire station, we'll subtract this $46,000 out to create our asset. And I don't know if there's, if you can go back and say, we've done $46,000 worth of work for you, you give us that in return. I don't know if we've done any of that in the past for the cities.
Okay. I just, I know we do that with the Water and Sewerage Authority, so I thought I would ask the question, because it is a value that's being conveyed to another government entity.
Yes, ma'am.
And, Mr. Bowman?
Yeah, one of the things, too, I think, in this particular case, fire station, we had several instances with the City of Stockbridge about certain water lines, moving certain utilities, and some other things. They worked with us reasonably well in those instances, did they not, Rod?
Yes, they did, Commissioner.
But I also think it's very important that we keep this, we, they, City of Stockbridge had to move some of their utilities in order for us to do the bridge project, and we pretty well held the line that, you know, they were, they had to do their share, because, I mean, it was in the, the bridge is in the city, but it's something that we've been working on very hard, so. I mean, they worked with us, but also, I agree 100% that we need to kind of keep an accounting for just when things like that come up, where we've got a, you know, they've got something within the city that's in our way, and that way, we've got something, we can say, well, you know, this is, we're just keeping accounting of it so that we can make it work.
Commissioner, to your point, and a prime example of that is, the fire station sits on the west side of Rockaway Road. The sewer is actually on the east side. We had to cross Rockaway Road. It's a gravity sewer. There was a conflict with the City of Stockbridge water line, and they relocated, or they adjusted that water line, okay, so we could get the fall on the sewer to reach it on the other side, so.
Yeah, I knew there was.
They were good to work with, as far as.
Yeah, I knew there were some things that we spent some time working together on, to try and be sure, you know, we didn't have the money to do it either, so. But they have worked with us on, on issues on Rockaway, as far as the bridge and, and the fire station's concerned. But it's good to keep an accounting of that so that we, you know, at least apples to apples on them, so.
Does any board member have a question, Mr. Preston?
Well, I just wanted to clarify, because I think you're, you're right on the accounting side with the going, y'all are more or less talking about an informal tab being kept, you know, just to kind of know what's going on, and I'm fine with that, as long as we make sure we give the cities credit, too, you know, it's not just, you know, one way with us, but that's, is that kind of what you were, because it's not really an accounting thing, it's more just keeping an informal tab?
It is, and we do that with the Water and Sewerage Authority. A lot of times, it's an exchange of right of way, or with the exchange of those assets and things like that. It just kind of.
No, I think it's a good idea.
Keeps everybody realizing that we're all working together, and that nobody's giving more than the other.
And that was the reason for my comment, Chair, is that, that we did work, they did work with us in relocating some of the things they needed, that we needed relocating simply because of where we put the fire station.
Sure.
So, we worked hand in hand with Stockbridge on that, it worked out, I would say, to both our advantage.
Yes, I agree, I agree.
Are there any other questions or comments? If not, there's a resolution before you to approve the deed of conveyance of these assets to the City of Stockbridge, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting approval of a deed of conveyance for the new E-911 Operations Center, and that's exhibit number four.
Thank you. This is similar to the previous resolution. It's necessary to approve a deed of conveyance for the commercial fire line meter, the contribution of fixed assets, limited warranty, and owner's affidavit between Henry County and the Henry County Water and Sewerage Authority for the new E-911 Operations Center in McDonough. The amount of the fixed assets for the compact fire meter paid by Henry County being conveyed to the Henry County Water and Sewerage Authority is $80,921.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution approving the conveyance, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to public safety, we have a resolution requesting approval of the performance partnership agreement with GMA, and our presenter is Don Ash, EMA Director, exhibit number five. Good morning.
Good morning. This is our annual grant that we get from GMA for being an established emergency management agency, meeting all the certification and the requirement as the EMA Director, as well as the emergency management agency. It's, the normal award is $35,802, and those funds will be used to support the emergency operations of the county.
Does any board member have a question or comment? If not, you have before you a resolution approving this performance partnership, and I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move.
Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Additionally, since I was here, I wanted to take an opportunity, there's been a lot of talk and discussions about the weather situations in the metro Atlanta area, and I wanted to provide the board an update on several projects we're working on for the emergency management, one being the reverse notification system for early warning, our tornado sirens package, which we both were starting to work with procurement to get those items on the street, and lastly, our hazard mitigation plan. Just wanted to let the board know those projects are going forward as we move.
Wonderful. Thank you for the update.
Hey, Don, before you leave, when do you project to be in your new home?
We're hopeful to be in, in the end of April.
End of April, exactly.
We're very appreciative.
Because it looks good, it's looking real good over there.
Mr. Holder?
Just to, to clarify something, in case it's, it's a little bit confusing to the public, the $35,802, that is the amount that comes to Henry County, period, for the operations of the center.
That's correct. It isn't.
If, if there is inclement weather or disasters, that comes as needed from the.
Additionally, these funds come annually to manage and support operations.
I just wanted to make that clear for the record, that that is some that might think, well, we only getting $35,000, and we've had tornadoes and different things that have come through. That's not the case.
Absolutely not.
We're paid additional if those incidents occur, so I just wanted to make that clear.
Sure thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on, on the agenda is under purchasing. We have a resolution requesting approval of a purchase requisition to be used to compensate field officials for the 2012 Adult Softball Spring League season. Our presenter is Rod Gray, Purchasing Director, exhibit number six. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This item is basically a request for a blanket purchase order in the amount of $23,040. Approval of this requisition will result in the, the said blanket, blanket purchase order for the Henry County Officials Association for the purpose of compensating field officials for the Adult Softball Spring League. The season is anticipated the last 12 weeks, and is anticipated there'll be 48 games played weekly, and the officials are compensated $40 per game. Registration fees will be used to cover this expense.
Does any board member have a question, Mr. Stamey?
Well, what, what were they paid last year?
Sir, I have absolutely no idea. Is the director of Parks and Recreation.
It's $20 per official, the two officials, same.
Same as it was last year, right? So, we're still looking at $40 a game, correct? Okay, thank you.
These, these fees are paid by the team.
Correct. I just didn't know, I know it's a, it's an in and out as far as accounting is concerned, I just didn't know if there was an increase from last year's fees to this year's fees, that's what I was trying to see. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any additional questions, Mr. Holder?
I'd like to address this one to Mr. Cooley, if possible.
And Tim, if you could step up here so we can hear you on the mic? I know you hate doing that, but Julie's probably pulling her hair out over there right now because she can't hear you on, on Channel 14.
And this can be, this, this can be to, to either purchasing or to the Rec Association, but the Henry County Officials Association, do y'all bid that service out? And who, who is the Henry County Officials Association?
The Henry County Officials Association does our basketball, and they do our adult softball, and there's no other organizations in the county that, that does it. There are that do the youth sports, like McDonough has their own youth umpires, the Tara Umpires, there's one, there's different ones that do youth, but there's no other ones in the county that do adult.
All right, but does each association bid their own umpiring out, or is it done through the Rec Association?
No, they do their own.
They do their own. All right, and this, and you saying this is the only one in, at Henry County that's qualified to do the adult?
Yes, and they've been doing it since late 70s. Yes, sir.
Since I was. Okay.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Bowman?
Just, just a comment. Just for clarification, also, these, all, these fees are covered in their registration, and I know you just said that, Rod, but just, just to be sure that, you know, the public knows that they pay their registration fees, it comes out, and then it goes back into the general funds, correct?
That is my understanding, yes, sir. Thank you. It is.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution approving the purchase requisition number 79925 in the amount of $23,040, and I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move.
Motion by Mr. Holmes, the second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting approval to purchase a high-capacity blower for the Department of Transportation, and that's exhibit number seven.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. This project went out through a sealed bid. The recommendation is to award the purchase of this straw blower to Mason Tractor Company with the lowest responsive bid of $14,364.50.
Does any board member have a question or comment? Mr. Preston?
Well, I saw in the notes, and I'm glad we have Commissioner Holder up here, is because I tried to go on pricegrabber.com, Amazon, eBay, this is one of the few items out there, even for us nerds, that you can't find what a high-capacity straw blower goes for, so I was going to defer to Commissioner Holder to let us know if that's a reasonable price.
Well, that's, I, I really don't have a question, a clue as to why. It's, it's hard to believe that 14 bids were sent out and there's only one response, especially when it's an item that is available. I mean, you know, it's, it's many places, and why we only got one bid, and I'm, I'm proud to see that our local dealer here actually submitted a bid, but I can't tell you if that's a good price, bad price. Based on the price that Mr. McNichol brought to us several months ago, is that the same price or close?
The one that I originally brought was for a used one, and it was for $8,500.
Yeah, but you also had in that one the price of what a new one would be, to give a comparison.
That one was bought about two years ago, and I think the price was in the 12, 5, 13 range, if I remember right.
Madam Chair.
Okay.
I had someone search the internet as well, and I found, they found, the only thing we could find is a Houston High-capacity Straw Blower, 31 horsepower gas, 16,675, which is lower than the price that's in the book, so I don't know if that's a.
And if it was 16,675 in the book, that sounds like a reasonable bid price, if that's.
And may I also add that not only did we send it to these 14 vendors, it was posted on the county's website, as well as the GLGA website, we tried to, you know, expand the opportunity for bids as much as we could on this, and I also cannot understand why we only got one.
It's hard to understand, but nevertheless, it did.
Did we get any feedback on why there was no additional bids?
No, we did not get any feedback. Only thing we did is the 14 vendors we sent it to, that particular buyer sent a read receipt, we saw that three vendors read it. That's all, that's all I can tell you as, as to the response.
Okay. Well, I just take by the fact that you can hardly find these things on the internet, that when you buy a straw blower, you must really like a straw blower. It stays in the family forever, because there's not a lot sold on the internet.
Oh, well.
Either that or you wear them out.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments, or would it be the board's wishes that we try to rebid this, and how desperate is it? Because I'm, you're borrowing one, Terry, currently from the Water and Sewerage Authority, is that correct?
I've been borrowing one, and theirs is not doing very well, so we're kind of gimping.
Based on the fact of, of the county manager's research and finding a, a price of 16,6 roughly, as an online price, and this is a bid price of 14,364, I would encourage the board to go ahead and buy it. It's, it's local, therefore, there is some advantage, because if there's parts serviced, you're right around the corner, so.
Is that in your motion, Mr. Holder?
I will, I will be happy to put that into the form of a motion, but I would just encourage the board for their support.
Okay.
I'd like to comment on that right now. We're having to rent one when we use one, and if we don't buy one, I'll have to continue renting one, so I'm not sure if we bid it out again, the savings we might save by the time we do that, the number of times I'll rent one, it's not likely we're gonna save a lot of money.
Okay. So, we have a motion on the floor to approve and award the bid in, in the amount of $14,364.50 to Mason Tractor Company, and I have a second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The final item under this section of the agenda is a resolution requesting award of a bid for mulch, and that's going to be exhibit number eight.
Thank you, yes. My final item is a request for an award for an annual contract for mulch, as requested by the Parks and Recreation Department. The recommendation is to award this contract to Lanier Plans Incorporated, DBE Corcat, as the overall low bidder. This award is for a unit-priced contract with no fixed quantities. Prices will remain firm for the contract term, and will be ordered as required and as approved.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have a resolution before you to award the contract to purchase mulch to Lanier Plans Incorporated, and I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move.
Motion by Mr. Holder, is there a second? Second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to planning and zoning services, this is a public hearing. Michael Tate of Locust Grove, Georgia, requests a modification to a zoning condition for property located at 3098 Jodico Road in Land Lot 79 of the 6th District. The request is to modify a zoning condition regarding allowable uses. Our presenter is Jeremy Gilbert, Planning and Zoning, and that's exhibit number nine. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and board members. The request that is before you is for property located at 3098 Jodico Road. The property has been used for a number of years as Jodico Auto Sales. They have recently left that location, leaving the property vacant. The Planning and Zoning Office did receive a business license application on January 24th, 2012, for a retail tire store. Based on the conditions that were approved, when this property was rezoned on November 7th of 1995, the property was rezoned with condition number one that states C2 conditional for auto sales only, so the only use that the property can be utilized as is for auto sales. The applicant is requesting that that condition be changed, that states all C2, all C2 uses be permitted, the use of an auto sales establishment shall be allowed as a C2 conditional only. Planning staff has reviewed this, and being that there is no C2 conditional zoning in our current Unified Land Development Code, staff's just recommending that that condition be removed in its entirety, being that all other C2 uses would be permitted, this use that they're requesting would be permitted under a standard C2, and it is compatible with other uses in the area. I'll answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Stamey?
What we can do, Father Latonya, Latonya, I have a question for you. The presenter hasn't got up and presented this other side of the case yet, but Doug Crumbly is an agent of, of, he's an agent of the company that I have my license with, he will be the presenter. Is there any conflict of interest there, or should I recuse myself in the vote?
Well, I don't, what's the relationship? Is he just a?
He's an independent contractor with an agency that, with the same real estate company.
And how many folks in your agency?
How many would you think, Doug? 28, 20, 28, 29 people?
Okay.
But we've had no dialogue, no conversation about this, but I'm more than comfortable to, to recuse myself, I mean, if that, if you see fit.
Okay, well, you guys don't have any pending financial transactions together?
No, ma'am.
Okay, and y'all, y'all don't on a regular basis, because you guys are independent? Okay, no, then that doesn't present a conflict under our ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Does any board member have a question for Jeremy? On the side of, okay? If not, I'm gonna ask the applicant's representative to come forward at this time. And if you would, state your name and address for the record.
Doug Crumbly.
And your address?
Personal address.
Well, or your work address?
Personal, 656 Crumbly Road, McDonough, 30252.
Mr. Crumbly, is there anything that you would like to add on behalf of the applicant?
I, I think he's covered it.
Does any board member have a question for Mr. Crumbly?
I guess, I mean, I'm, I'm news, y'all bear with me, but everything I read in the report is there's no adverse effect from, so the committee, y'all are not making a recommendation that this would be a bad thing?
Correct. I mean, the way the property is zoned now, it's on the C2 conditional, and it actually allows a C3 use, so it's a more intrusive use to be a used car lot, so allowing the other C2 uses wouldn't, wouldn't have any other adverse effect.
Just to give you a little history on, on this particular area, it's right across the street, almost, where it was, was a tire store. And when the state of Georgia came in to do the Jodico Road bridge lining, they consumed that other side, so there was one literally probably 150 feet away from this location, so it was, there was some presence of, of a tire store in this vicinity prior to this application, if it happened.
If there's no further questions for the applicant, since this is a public hearing, I do need to call for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? All right, if there's no further questions or comments for staff or the applicant, Mr. Stamey, I will look to you for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, we approve it.
And we have a motion to approve. Is there a second? We have a second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to county manager, we have a resolution requesting authorization to extend the lease agreement with the Department of Agriculture, and our presenter is Fred Oletta, our deputy county manager, exhibit number 10. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Come before you for a resolution for the authorization, the extension of a lease agreement with the United States Department of Agriculture. We received on February 16th a request from USDA for a 24-month lease for the property located at 333 Phillips Drive, McDonough, Georgia, requesting to approve the supplemental lease agreement extending the terms from the current lease through, including September 30th, 2013. Terms will be for a 24-month term, provided that they do have a right to terminate the lease or decrease the amount of space at any time, as per the contract, existing lease for, within 60, with a 60-day notice. This lease has been in effect since 2001, and even though the lease expired in September, they have been paying rent in October through the current period, and this basically just memorializes the lease and what's been going on and continuing as it's set for 24 months.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
I'd like to make a comment, Madam Chair, and that is, this lease went from, is basically 10 years, you say, back to '01, but the USDA has occupied the Aubrey Harvey Building since it was built, and that was back in the 90s. So, they have, they have been quite a good tenant for Henry County over the years, and I just wanted, I, we've had many things over the years that we were offering incentives to the USDA to keep them, to where there would be regional offices left here. We've been unsuccessful in doing that, but they have continued to lease the space, and I just, I just think we, we, we need to be grateful for the, to the USDA for their many years of leasing of this space.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resol, a resolution authorizing the lease agreement, and I'll entertain a motion.
Move.
Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. And the final item under the county manager is a resolution requesting authorization to amend the citizen participation plan regarding the CDVG entitlement program, that's exhibit number 11.
Good morning again. The resolution, again, as was stated, is to amend the citizen participation plan, which is a requirement of the HUD code, a requirement of HUD with regards to the CDVG entitlement program, which the county became available, eligible for last year. The board on January 17th adopted Resolution 12-09. We've had conversations with the consulting firm of Mullins and Lunnergon. Bill Wazaluski, Will Wazaluski is our representative with the firm, he came up, he reviewed the prior citizen participation plan, came up with some recommendations. County attorney reviewed it with him, and the changes have been made, or before you. Primary change is to add the cities as a place of notice, all four cities in the county, a place of notice for the plan once it's prepared. Couple other housekeeping items. Staff and I reviewed with Bill, not only the plan, but a program of making sure that we achieve the targeted dates. As you know, that the plan has to be, was to have been to them back in, on April, excuse me, get the right date here, had to be to them by May 15th, in order to achieve the date of July 1st approval. We reviewed it and found that with Bill as well, that we did not have the appropriate time to get it done, so I've requested an extension for 45 days to get the proper planning done and proper notifications and citizen meetings done, and we did receive the next day an approval for that extension, and so that's been taken care of. care of. Let's see, the, a couple of the things that come out of this is that we will have stakeholder meetings on the 20, 21st and 22nd for three days, in which we'll be inviting various groups and, again, stakeholders in the county that have reason to participate in this. We'll have our first public meeting on May 20th, excuse me, March 20th, 5:00 to 6:30. We have not had a location choice yet. And also that we'll probably have Mr. Wazaluski make a presentation to the board on the evening of the 20th meeting. As a requested approval of the amended Citizens Participation Plan.
Mr. Holmes, you had a question?
I have a question. Alfred, we are looking to receive about $850 million?
Eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, okay, yeah, thousand, sorry.
I'll put that in, see if we can get it, but thousands.
Is there a formula on how those funds will be divided between the cities or the districts?
No, there isn't. We, we met and actually had one of the city representatives who had called me and asked to get some update, and we had him attend the conference call we had about last week, so he could ask some questions and get an understanding of that. First question that really, we came out of the box, was that of, is there a formula? And there is no formula. The county is, again, going to work through these public hearings and the stakeholder meetings, and then the consulting firm will work with us to put that plan together for the 12-month, and then for the other four years as well.
How will the projects be determined? By the citizens?
Again, through the, through this process of the stakeholder meetings and a review of the, what the stakeholders bring and the, as well as the city, or the citizen meetings, meetings that we're going to have, there'll be two meetings. The first one is, as Michael indicated, is March 22nd.
I have one more question, was regarding, I think, Section 7. It said that the minute, the written minutes will only be available during normal business hours. So, wondering if we could make those available 24 hours on the website?
There's no reason to not be able to do that, I would think.
If you can post my site somewhere, I work with the county clerk, and I'm sure we can post this on site somewhere, either Planning and Zoning site or on the Board of Commissioners' website.
Okay.
Do you want to kind of, as far as that may, what kind?
I think right now it's a penalty at 6:30. We're going to put out a public announcement, probably today, tomorrow, just want to make sure everything is secure, the locations are secure. It'll likely be held right here in this building, for right now. And we'll put notifications out, work with Julie and the Communications Department, make sure we get notifications put out on our Channel 14 as well, and noted on our website.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairman, the recommendation for change on page 5, want to add in on the county clerk's site, but the minute posting to the contract, I think that's the appropriate place to put that.
Any other questions or comments on this item? All right, if not, there is a resolution before you requesting authorization to amend the Citizens Participation Plan, which is a requirement of HUD, and it pertains to our CDBG program. And with the changes that were requested by Commissioner Holmes to publish those minutes on the website, I'll entertain a motion for approval. Motion by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Stainey, all in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is nominations for consideration as an appointment to the Hospital Authority. And I believe that those terms actually expire December the 31st, but they continue to serve in that capacity until other nominees are elected to serve on that board. When we tabled this item, we had four individuals who were nominated to be considered, Dr. Gupta, Dr. Sylvane, Mike Gasses, and Gary Friedman. And I'd like to ask if there are any others that the board wishes to place on this for consideration before I ask for a motion to approve. Okay? If not, if someone wants to make the motion to approve the nominations?
I mean, the law requires that there be three nominations per vacancy. And then the hospital, the hospital has the right to select from that canvas list. They can select from that list or reject everyone that you submit in the list. We can go ahead and send that, but I'm not sure if giving them a limited option will increase or decrease the chances that the folks will be selected. So, I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Okay. I know based on past history...
Yes, ma'am.
They have pretty much determined that the folks who are there continue to serve in that capacity, even when we've opted to nominate people who were not on that board currently. So...
You're right.
It's, you know, it's one of those boards where we kind of have a say-so, but we really don't have a say-so. It's more of a...
Formality.
Formality.
Yes, you're right.
But if someone wishes to table this item and provide three nominees for each position, we can do that, or we can submit that as it stands on this resolution.
So, I'll just clarify, so you're saying that we should submit nine names to be technically correct?
Yes.
Since there's three of the positions that ended on December 3rd?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, does it say a minimum of three or up to three? A minimum of three?
No.
Or up to three? It just says three.
Three vacancies, yes, it says three per vacancy. That's how the law is interpreted to read. And also, it's my understanding that they're having a meeting tomorrow evening, so tabling it might not be a good idea, or if y'all can come up with some additional names.
Well, we don't meet the requirement of yours, because it says three. We're about five short, so I don't think we have any, any choice but to table the request.
And it's a statute, yes, it's a statute.
Yeah, if it reads a minimum of three, then we have to do the minimum.
And I understand what you're saying, but if we have four nominees, I question this board anyhow, as far as how functional it's going to be with the new Piedmont-Henry merger. I don't know, I don't have a way to know. But we will have satisfied at least one of the requirements. If you had three that expired in December, you send them four names, so they can choose from those four for one to replace one of them anyhow. I would, my recommendation would be to approve this resolution, send those four names, and let them tell us where we're wrong. That's my opinion.
There is a theory in the law that when the word "shall" is used, and there's no penalty associated, that it's merely a directory and not mandatory, even though "shall" means do it. So, there's no penalty for not doing. I think the ultimate penalty that could happen is they could just send it back and reject it.
How many, how many months has this board failed to submit a list of nominees in the past? And I don't remember any kind of punishment or anything.
Correct.
But the point is, these appointees will continue to serve until their replacement is named.
Right. I mean, and the ultimate punishment is that they reject it. I mean, there's nothing that's going to, they reject the list, or they could accept it.
Well, with that thought, if we still have a three that's presently serving, if they're still going to serve, what's it going to hurt to table the request and do it right and send it right the first time?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Oletta?
Question for the county attorney, and what if the names were submitted, the same names were submitted for each of the three positions, would that not qualify for nominations for each position using the same three names?
No, it has to be different names.
Does it say different? Or does it...
For Dr. Gupta's position, you could submit Dr. Gupta, Dr. Sylvane, Mike Gasses, and Gary Friedman for that position. Then for Dr. Sylvane's position, you submit Dr. Gupta, Mike Gasses, and Gary Friedman for that one. And then for Mike Gasses' position, you submit Dr. Gupta, Dr. Sylvane, and Gary Friedman for that one.
That's artful. That's artful.
But what happens if they take, if they take Dr. Gupta off the chart right the very first one, and then they go back and get Dr. Stainey? You have two left, Mike Gasses and Gary Freeman, for the last two. You're, you're out.
That's interesting.
And you force them to have another meeting to nominate some more, so, I don't know.
We can take some of the simplest things and make them the most complicated. It reminds me of the Lob-Lolly Pine discussion we had several months back that took 45 minutes.
So that they could keep us all confused on who was going in, who was doing what, who was making what, who was doing everything, so anyhow.
And just so that the citizens who are reviewing this do not think we are absolutely incompetent in what we're doing, the way that the hospital authority is set up is that the Board of Commissioners makes a recommendation for these positions. The hospital can accept them or reject every one of them and send back and ask us to submit more names. So, basically, we don't, we do not have the authority to make that decision. The hospital authority does. But we are charged with submitting names to them, and we did this when Jason Harper was the chairman, and we sent several lists up there, and they rejected them every time until we sent the ones that they wanted, basically. So, whatever the board determines to do with this, if you want to table it, we can. If you want to do it as, as the Deputy County Manager has suggested, we could do it that way. There are not vacancies existing on that board. These individuals are continuing to serve until, until they get their list to vote on.
Madam Chair, can I make a nomination that we table the request until the March 19th meeting, 9:00 a.m.?
Okay, we have a motion to table. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. All right, moving on in the agenda, we're going to look at the approval of the February 6th and 7th regular meeting minutes. And of course, Mr. Preston, you were not here for those. And if there are no additions to either of those set of minutes, I will look for a motion to approve those. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Stainey, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. Did anyone sign up for public comments? Mr. County Manager, anything for public session?
None, thank you.
Ms. County Attorney?
No, ma'am.
Upcoming meetings and events, Monday, March 19th at 9:00 a.m., and Tuesday, March 20th at 6:30 p.m. These are both regular meetings. Monday, April 2nd at 9:00 a.m. is a workshop meeting, and Tuesday, April 3rd at 9:00 a.m. is a regular VOC meeting. At this time, I need a motion to convene into executive session.
I know some people are here. Mr. Harris, whom will this be discussed?
We can certainly discuss it at the next workshop meeting, I think that being the board's desire. Again, this is going to come as a discussion, and it's not for action, but that would certainly be from the time, timing standpoint, I think, with, with the individuals that are here. I think that would still meet within their timeframe. So, if that's okay, if that's agreeable with the board.
Okay, so that people are not wondering what we're talking about, there's a concern here about a zoning concern that Mr. Harris and several board members have discussed concerning the location on Rockwater Road. Can this be handled administratively, Michael?
Yeah, this particular issue certainly can be. That, I think the conversation, and the staff would still like to bring before the board, was in regards to supplemental standards and conditional uses. It's a general, more of a general conversation, not for this one particular item, but more of a general conversation on how we handle conditional uses in certain applications.
But this particular situation can be handled administratively?
Yes, sir, we feel it can be.
Okay.
Is that all?
That's all, my dear.
All right, if I could, I need a motion to convene into executive session for potential pending litigation personnel and land acquisition matters. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. I need a motion to reconvene into public session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Stainey, second by Mr. Preston, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. This time, I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Stainey, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. If there's no further business to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Preston, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. We stand adjourned.